Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone out to our work meeting this evening. July 16th, the time is now 5:33. We're excited to get started here. And as usual, we start out with what I, what we call our council reports. So I will enter, ask each one of the council members if they've got anything to report on. You start over there with Mr. Day.
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. Boxen, do you have anything to report on?
Davis Arts Council has a free concert this weekend. They're gonna, I believe, have tickets available in just a few days. So be able to look. I mean, it's just a way for you to have something to do in the midst of kind of all of what the craziness that's going on. So, and their numbers are looking, their projections are going kind of where they were hoping to go. And so the executive director was optimistic about, about that moving forward.
Do you want to mention the Friday night films as well?
Yeah.
Do it.
Okay. So in addition to that, I know the Arts Council has been doing their Friday night films, the free films. And I have, I've been over there volunteering and I gotta say, they've, they've got a very good handle on this. In order to even attend, you need to let them know in advance. So they have a ticket on it. They are accepting walk-ups, so if you decided at the last minute you want to come to it, you can. But again, they're keeping track. They've got X amount of seats at, in the green seats. And then of course, they've got the lawn figured out as well. So they've, they've done an excellent job on, on socially distancing and being able to entertain our citizens. So I appreciate that. Ms. Patrick, do you have a report?
Um, yeah, our community that cares, Kim, let me know if you can't hear me. Um, we had a Zoom meeting this past week, um, because we're trying to get it back up and going. And it went really well. We had a lot of pretty impressive people that have agreed to kind of be key, key organizers for this. Um, Davis Behavioral Health will be doing surveys with key leaders throughout the community. And after that, I guess we'll start getting community members and breaking up into committees and getting it really rolling. So.
That's good. It was very good meeting and I appreciate you spearheading that. Okay, Mr. Morris?
Um, yesterday there was a press event.
A big press event.
Golf course for the, um, beta test of the infrared cameras from, that we're using. I guess it was a BYU project in conjunction with Utopia. And the idea is you have a, I call them a pair of infrared binoculars that are on a antenna at Valley View Golf Course that are spanning the, scanning the foothills for hotspots to help with wildfire season. And a couple of us had some press time on TV, Mr. Jensen and Chief Ward. But that's exciting, especially with, with fire season well underway. Any, any five minutes, 10 minutes, a half hour, any sort of, uh, early detection is going to be helpful in those first few minutes to help mitigate a, a fire. So glad we were part of the test. I guess there are two others in the, in the state that are set up right now and, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay. And we appreciate your service on that Utopia board because Utopia is the one that's, uh, we're able to make this happen, correct?
Yeah.
Hey Clint, I didn't see the report or anything. Do you know how far that thing scans?
They, it was 10 to 20 miles is what that one is doing.
So it covers pretty much that face now.
Yeah.
And I think that Chief said in his media comments that they had a spark or something on July 4th, around July 4th, that they were able to see and monitor using that, the camera. So they've already had some use out of it already. So which is pretty awesome. Technology and personal responsibility coming together, let's hope.
Yes. And the fact that, uh, from what I understand, the cameras that we have mounted right now, there's actually a, a newer version that is, that we'll be actually installing as soon as it gets here, that will have a higher definition and more spanability. So this is exciting and I, I congratulate our, our chief and our staff and everybody that's been involved with trying and being forward-thinking and taking care of our city and our citizens because that's very critical. And I understand response time is what really counts here. Okay, Mr. Thomas, do you have anything?
No.
Okay.
Oh.
Um, I know my, mine's a mayor's report. I guess I can report on mine at the end because I know some of you were involved with my area. Um, okay. Well, with that, let's go ahead and move on then to item number two, which is Tracy Paulbert. He's gonna give us a quick review on our April revenue numbers.
Mayor members of the council, so I did a little handout tonight. Guess I didn't feel like doing a slideshow for two pieces of paper, but maybe now that I realize we're streaming, I should have. I apologize. But wanted to present to you, I believe we looked at these numbers for April. And April was under budget by about 91,000. That was actually really good compared to what we thought it might've been with lots of things shut down during the month of April. Then I've gone ahead and done some estimates for May and June to finish out the year. Uh, we won't get those numbers, uh, May next week and then sometime in August, probably around the 20th of August for June. If we, if we take 6% of what we received last year in sales tax, that's a number that the state's been floating around out there. Is around 6% reduction. I don't think that we'll actually be that far down, but I figured I'd err on the side of caution. So that takes our May and June down below our budget each of those months, a pretty good amount. Overall, for the year, we'd be under budget by 234,000 if that's how that materializes. So down about 1.43% on the year. So that's, you know, I think that's in a great position. That's good. And also to remind you that that, that budget for 2020 was a pretty aggressive budget. We'd been conservative for a long time on those sales tax numbers. And, and in the 2020 budget, we ramped it up a bit. So that should be good. The next page was to give you an idea of overall general fund, not just sales tax. Because we obviously have multiple sources of revenue in the general fund. Sales tax just happens to be the largest. And you can see our, the middle column, 2020 budget versus what I'm estimating for the end of 2020. Some of those things have already come in. For example, licenses and permits, uh, you know, up 430,000 over budget, about 170,000 over what we got last year. And so those numbers are still looking really strong. The number that I have in there for intergovernmental on that line, that number will change as we close out the year end and we reconcile all of our different grant programs. We just aren't to that point yet, so I can't guess what the number would be. But it, it should go up. And so the negative number in the last column will go down. Overall, if you look at the general fund total, I would anticipate the general fund revenue will be about 150,000 ahead of the budget. And so that puts us in a good position for the end of the year. Are there any questions? And if, and as you look at these, if you have questions, feel free to give me a call. But I think that's, that's probably about where we're gonna end up.
Okay, council, do you have any questions on this or?
So you say you'll have May's next week?
Next week.
Could you just do like you did last month and just send us an email with it?
I'll send this out once I have the actual number.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, I think.
Now, we're, we're assuming April was the worst month.
Correct. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Tracy, just really quick, you, uh, before you, you gave us also a, a breakdown by category as far as sales tax goes, the restaurants and the home improvement. And is that something?
I could put that together for you if you'd like, sure.
That would be good to see.
I didn't bring it tonight, but I do have that. What you've ended up with is obviously your restaurants and your hotels, department stores, things that were closed for the most part were down. Uh, I mean, you know, movie theaters, nonexistent. And then you had your home improvements and your big, other big box stores and grocery stores that were all up significantly. So it balanced it out pretty well. Um, also car dealerships were up.
That was a question, yeah, car dealerships.
I wouldn't have suspected that, but then again, I see a lot of people with new tags driving around. So you know, hey, good for us.
Um, just a quick question on the intergovernmental. Um, maybe remind me why we were budgeting so high compared to what the actual 2019 was?
So we budget for what we anticipate the grants will be. Then at the end of the year, each quarter, we do some draws on those grants. And most of the time, we do a large, large draws at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year. Well, those get reconciled out during July and then we make the final draws. And I just don't have those numbers yet. So that's why I say that it should come in. Then again, we don't always draw all of the money that the grant awards us either. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. I don't know, you know, a lot of those are police grants and so they do it as they need it. And if they don't use it in one budget year, they can carry it to the next. A lot of times they'll be using grant money from two or three years back, depending on the project, so.
And last, when we passed the budget, we made some, some, uh, decisions based on tiered. We were waiting to do the merit pay and all that. Um, these are the numbers we were waiting for. So is it your understanding that April is going to be the worst month, May's going to be better? And that, that we can kind of see this thing not cratering out like we thought, like we worried back, way back in March? And that, uh, maybe just, just kind of your idea of, if you think that in your professional opinion, if you feel like it's, that we could move forward with those merit pays based on this information and what you think May's gonna look like?
Right. So based on what City Manager Alex and I discussed and what we discussed with the council, we'd be better off waiting a little bit. Because even though I've estimated these numbers, there's no guarantee of what they're going to be. Um, if our home improvement and grocery and things were really high and they fall back into more of a normal range, you know, it could be, it could be a little worse. So it'd be better to hold and see, see what happens like we discussed. I don't think we're in a hurry to move forward. We want to move forward cautiously.
Right.
Like everybody agreed, so.
Okay. That's, that helps, thank you.
I think we were talking more like in the fall.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't saying do it now.
And deeper dive again.
I was just saying, kind of the, the means of travel, you know, we're, we're moving in the right direction. I mean, I'm down, down a point and a half, I mean.
At the end of August, we'll have most all of these numbers solidified. We'll have our final sales tax, our final BNC road money. We'll know where all that stands. So, you know, probably first meeting in September when I report all those numbers. They won't be audited numbers at that point, but they'll be pretty much, they'll be ready to be audited.
Okay.
And then we could start having those discussions, I believe.
Great. Thank you.
You know, as a, as a community, we're, we're fortunate that the economy's diverse. Uh, you know, if we were just in one, if we were just known as the movie theater capital, we'd be in trouble. But, uh, because of long-term planning and great planning from the Community Economic Development Group, uh, this group, past councils, that it's, we've got to keep the economy diverse. And I think we're doing that and, and it shows when you have something catastrophic is, is what has happened economically. And to see these numbers and have them not be as bad as, as we were fearing, that's, again, it, it shows how diverse and strong the, the economy here is, here in Leighton is, and we gotta, we gotta keep that up. That's, so thank you.
True.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, move to item number three, which is a presentation on our street lights. Uh, Terry Colburn will be presenting that and I understand Mr. Jackson may be joining in. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get going on the street lights, I'd like to update the council on an item we talked about maybe a month ago. I don't know. But we had a sidewalk project that we bid. We're down on West Hillfield Road that we awarded, but we saved a substantial amount of money. You remember that bid? And Alex had told us and had told you that we would go back and check to see if the project that is down by the shoreline junior high, 1941 West, 1000 South, would be done with the savings along with the West Hillfield Road project, uh, west of the tracks, on the south side of the road, down to Sugar Street. So Steve had his people put some numbers together. And I talked with Alex today and it looks like that we'll be able to add those two projects because of the money we saved. And so we are going to go ahead with that. And we had told you that if that were the case, we'd come back and update you. So that's the update.
That's great news, I'm sure.
Where exactly is the one by the junior high?
It's, I was gonna say, there's that, there's that one home that does not have a sidewalk, kind of just between the Ovation Development and the street going down to the, uh, West Side Drive. So there's one home, so it's Wright's home there.
Right.
Or Bright's, I mean, yeah.
I was just curious where.
Yeah, just that one home.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. I read through those eyes.
So if there's no other questions on that, then we'll get into a little street light talk. Let me just tell the council that when, um, we were talking and doing the budget and the concern of the council about that if they gave the $2 increase, that, uh, they wanted to make sure the money was spent right, put in the right places to lighten up darkened areas, okay? Well, let me assure you as the director and as Alex is the city manager and Mr. Appeloni and Steve Jackson who are here tonight, we will address that utility with the fervor that we do any of them, like the water department, like the sewer. Well, there won't be any misunderstanding that we understand what the directive is. And Steve will come up and present some information in a while and you guys can put your input, but let there be no misunderstanding that we will hit the street lights just like the department does everything else. Okay? In the city, we own about 1,200 street lights. Rocky Mountain Power owns about 2,000. Don't know if council and the mayor is aware, but included in the street light project are the traffic signals. And included in the traffic signals are the hawk crossing, okay? The hawk crossings for the trail and stuff, they are, they have the same kind of cabinet and are same type of setup as a traffic signal, just not as detailed. And those are, are very important devices to say the least, okay? Mistakes there and you could have some serious injuries. And credit has to be given to Paul, my assistant, because as we grew, he's had to teach the people that take care of those street lights and hawk crossings. And knock on wood, we haven't had any incidences at those. But neighboring cities, whether it's north or south, I think between the two of them, they have one traffic light. The rest are done by the state. So that is also included in the street light project. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Steve and let him present.
Thank you, Terry. It's good to be with you tonight, Mayor and Council. I can here, I'm gonna pull up my presentation really quickly. Um, so I just wanted to briefly review some of the items we've discussed about our street lighting system and then also show you one of our, um, tools that we use to design and to lay out our, our street lights and then help maintain them. So, um, as you recall, I presented some slides just on the initial costs of these street lights. They're, they're not, um, by any means the, the gold-plated Cadillacs, but they are a very quality, high-quality light that we, we install. They, they have a nice architectural decorative look to them and, um, they, they're very durable as long as people don't hit them with their vehicles that we unfortunately have happen sometimes. But, um, the, the streetlight costs, the residential streetlights are these SLO2s and, and they're just the numbers that we have so that we know which lights are where. Um, again, they're, they're a lower cost for install because they're usually direct berry into, um, existing power connections that are at each home in a subdivision. But then as you move to the collectors, they're a little bit more decorative with a cage on the, the, the light. And, um, they end up running a little bit more on the higher end for the, the install costs simply because a lot of times we're running a lot of conduit and a lot of extra infrastructure to get them onto the, the collector roads where they need to be. And they also require a concrete base that has to be installed with those lights. So, um, the second set we have, we have some SLO3 lights, the specialty lights that you see. There's some down on, um, South Main Street. There's some over by the, the roundabout on 1425 North up by the mall. Um, we don't have a lot of these, but there is an option there for us to, to install those when we choose and, and when we want to make more of an aesthetic look to them as well. And then our arterial streets, they, they have the SLO1s of the wider roads in the city. Uh, they have that teardrop style light and, and those lights are, are installed down Leighton Parkway and some of our other major street thoroughfares. So, um, again, this map was shown previously, but all of the, the, the dots on this map in red are Leighton City-owned streetlights. Um, we have some private lights you can see in blue. And then there's some, uh, kind of lighter gray lights. And those are all the Rocky Mountain Power lights throughout the city that we have. So they have a pretty substantial network of lights throughout the city from, from previous to when Leighton City started installing our own streetlights. Um, so like Terry mentioned, we have just over 1,000 lights and then Rocky Mountain Power has approximately 2,000 or so. Um, so I wanted to kind of review how we lay our streetlights out in the city. Um, there's a lot of questions people have as to why they don't have a streetlight right in front of their house or why, you know, their neighbor has one and they don't. Or, or we have some people say, why can't you put the light away from my house? Because I don't want it in front of my house. And, and so we, we do try and lay out the streetlights in, in an orderly fashion so that we, we kind of meet some of our design criteria. So on collector and residential streets, those SLO2, SLO4 lights, uh, we try and maintain a spacing of anywhere from 300 to 450 feet between those lights. And that helps to, to light the area adequately, but not overlight the area to where it becomes a nuisance for the, the residents in the neighboring areas. On the, the arterials and on roads where we alternate the street, uh, the, the lights on the sides, either side of the street, uh, we typically have to use a 250-foot spacing because the, the teardrop light doesn't spread quite as far as those SLO2, SLO4 lights that we have. So that's why they're a little bit closer together when they're on alternating sides of the street or, or on the arterials. Um, some of the focus areas that we look at when we're trying to design these lights is any intersection that we have, want to make sure there's adequate lighting at all the intersections, as well as any crosswalks or, or curves in the roadway that might potentially, uh, create a hazard if, if there isn't adequate lighting. Um, and then also cul-de-sacs and dead ends, we get a lot of requests for, for lighting in the ends of streets just to make sure there's not any, you know, allure to having a dark area back there. Um, some of the other really important considerations we have to take into account is where is the power available to us? Um, sometimes we, we'd like to do it a certain way, but the power sources are so far away that it's cost prohibitive to actually get the power to them if we don't, uh, do some design modifications. But we still strive to meet those spacing requirements that we have listed up above. And then, um, sometimes existing utilities are a problem. A lot of times we have irrigation, uh, flood irrigation lines in the park strips that don't allow us to place our streetlights on either side of the road or, you know, one side only. And, and so we have to take a look at that. And then also development is, it's occurring, um, if there's currently developed parcels and undeveloped parcels, then we look at, you know, what is, what makes the most sense? Is it a future development thing or is it something the city needs to go in and, and create a project to enhance that roadway? And then also roadway accesses for, for businesses and churches and other things so that we can ensure that, uh, those, those are treated as intersections, even though they're not full roadway intersections. We treat them as such so that there's adequate lighting to make sure people entering and exiting those accesses have, um, adequate lighting there. So, um, I can, I'd like to jump to our, our street light editor, if it'll open for me. We'll see if this link.
Hey Steve?
Actually works. Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Solar, is that, is that viable or just not? I don't, I mean, I'm just throwing it out.
Um, we, we do use. We do use solar for, for a lot of, you know, our signs, if they're, you know, like our crosswalk signs that can handle that. But some of the wattages that we run and things, the solar is not quite as reliable.
Not gonna make it.
As you would, you would hope. And so because of that, um, we haven't really gone to that. And that, that's not to say we couldn't try that at some point in the future if, uh, you know, the technology advances. So, see if I can get this to open up. I might ask for a password or something. Um, so, so this is our streetlight editing tool. And, and what I wanted to show you on it is, is all of the different, um, the, the maps and things that we have or the different items that are in there. So we have, we have all of our streetlights. I'm gonna turn off some of these junction boxes and things because they're not quite as, um, useful. But, um, as we, as you look here, all of these dots that are green with, uh, with a red dot in the middle, those are all proposed streetlights that the city has master planned throughout, throughout the whole city. Um, all of those, I'm gonna turn those off for a second because they kind of cloud. Um, sorry, I gotta get to the right tool here. Our GIS people do such a good job for us that sometimes we've got too many, too many opportunities here for, um, for this data. So, so as you can see, here's our, here's our proposed streetlights. So you see, we still got quite a few out there that we need to, to have installed. And you can see that a lot of them are on major roadways like on Gordon Avenue or on, um, Fort Lane in Fairfield and some of those streets. But, but then we have the Leighton City-owned streets here. And, and so you can see that we've, we've helped cover quite a bit of the areas that were, were maybe not as, as bright. And then as you look at those with Rocky Mountain Power, um, you can see that, that a lot of the city has quite a few streetlights in it. And, and then we have some private lights that are, that are mapped in, in residential areas. However, we don't have all of the streetlights mapped on, on commercial, um, commercial zones. So, so you can kind of see over here by the mall, there's, there's streetlights over at the mall. We just don't have those in our records. And, um, that's just a, a future thing if we ever decide that we want to do that. But, um, also I wanted to kind of show the, the tool we use here for, for our buffer. So we have a 450-foot buffer that we set up. Um, and that buffer shows all of these areas in orange is, is kind of the coverage that we would consider those lights to be. Now, it's not perfect because it doesn't take into account that a streetlight faces one direction and doesn't shoot behind it. But, but it helps us kind of look at this and map out where we need to look for, for potential areas to improve the lighting and to, you know, fill in those holes, um, as you go forward. And then the blue, the blue-colored, um, buffers are, are there. And they are for the proposed streetlights so that they kind of cover those areas where, um, we, we just ensure that as we're planning for new streetlights, that we're not forgetting or missing those areas. So, uh, as we go forward, if a, if a streetlight needs to be on one side of the road or the other to make that coverage work, we can adjust those. So, um, anyway, so I wanted to show you that tool because that's, that's a really helpful tool that our, our street lighting engineer uses to help design and then, uh, determine whether it's a city project, whether it's going to be a development project. But, but at the same time, we don't want to have overlapping projects where a developer puts in a streetlight and it's in the wrong location, or the city puts in a streetlight and it's in the wrong location. So as we coordinate those. Um, and then just a couple of final slides on this item. Uh, just wanted to remind you of all the, the streetlight installations that we've taken care of since we began the project. We have, uh, about 481, uh, streetlights that were installed at city projects. Uh, this is. We have about 481 streetlights that were installed at city projects. This doesn't count all of the development projects that have been done. Of those, there was an additional 126 residential installations that were not identified in that original master plan that took place to make sure we were filling in those gaps for, for the streetlights to ensure we're covering the city. And then just a reminder of the ones that were planned, there were only nine lights that did not get installed and a couple of them are from right-of-way issues. And then there's nine over in, or excuse me, seven in the Cook subdivision where each home has its own yard light. And so there's kind of some nuances to taking out somebody's private streetlight in their yard to put in our own public streetlights. So, so those are the two that are not complete from that original master plan. So that's all I have for the streetlighting. Is there any questions I can answer or some, any feedback?
I have one quick question.
Yeah.
So like in that Cook subdivision area where they're private, is there a plan to, to identify certain homes and approach those residents? Or are you just putting it on the table for now? I'm not sure what.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've kind of tabled that one for now because we're, we're not sure that the lights are, are old enough to need to go be replaced, but, but there's some, you know, we got to figure out where the power connections could be. Some of those streets actually have the, the streetlight there and then the power meter is connected to those lights that connects to the home. And so if we went to take out somebody's yard light, we might also have to replace their entire electrical service to their home in order to make the, the connection. And so it's been on the list, but, but because of those yard lights, we felt like there was, you know, adequate lighting. It just wasn't city-owned street lighting.
Steve, what's the maintenance plan for the Rocky Mountain Power-owned lights?
So as, as we've been looking into the Rocky Mountain Power lights, I believe at the time, the cost was, was cost prohibitive to just go in and start replacing all of those lights. However, as those lights start to expire, I guess with their service life, we've had a few that, that are fiberglass poles and they start to bloom, they call it, where they actually start to peel apart. We've, we've actually gone in and started to, to replace those with our own lights as, as we see those, those needs. But that is part of what my staff and I are working on now is to identify, have we met all of the existing needs from the city in areas that are not lighted and, or maybe underlighted, like the Cook subdivision is kind of on that border. But then to start looking at areas and saying, okay, are we at a point where some of these Rocky Mountain Power lights need to start being replaced? And so I think you'll see some of those projects come through where, where we want to go and possibly replace those lights.
I thought, are they ours to replace? Rocky, I, I heard somewhere in a meeting that we weren't going to buy their old pole, you know, whatever.
Yeah. So, so we do.
What are you talking about replacing?
We do pay a fee every month for every single Rocky Mountain Power light that we have in the city connected to.
Right.
And, and so the question becomes, do we want to, to pay for that new light in perpetuity and then they replace it and fix it? Or do we want to upgrade them to our standard lighting because they will not upgrade to our lighting for us? So we'll have to do that. So, so the answer is technically no, it's not. But if we want to, to upgrade and to make the system complete the way we want, then it's probably prudent that we start taking care of it as they reach the end of their usable life.
When they're, yeah. Okay. So we have that.
We have that, we have that option. Yeah. And then we aren't paying what basically amounts to a lease payment on those poles for 50 years. So.
Good.
Any other questions?
One more question?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate that. That was enlightening. No.
Oh, no.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That was a setup.
Can we make a comment? Thanks. For addressing it, I mean, when we ask questions and to get that feedback in the, in the time that we have, that's nice. I mean, it's, so we aren't sitting out here worrying or wondering. That was nice. Terry, I know you guys always jump on things.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, we can move on to item number five, which it's, no, four, excuse me. It's for the development guidelines and design standards.
Okay, perfect. So I think this, this question came out of our last update to the design guidelines and standards. And there were some questions regarding the requirements for LID or what's called low-impact development standards. So, so I'm going to start with the low-impact development standards as they relate to stormwater here in Leyton City. Just a couple of acronyms I'm going to use because I can't speak enough to say these over and over again, but low-impact development or LID is an approach to land development that uses various land planning tools to mitigate, you know, potential problems with natural resources and infrastructure costs to keep them down. MS4 stands for municipal separate storm sewer system. So that's why I can't say that one over and over again because it's tongue twister. But basically that's the system that the, the city owns of their stormwater that conveys water to the state or waters of the state is what they, they're referred to. But it doesn't include a combined sewer. So we don't, we don't have any combined sewers here in Leyton, but basically it's our city storm drain system. And then BMPs are best management practices as they pertain to stormwater. You know, they're either structural, vegetative, you know, whatever to be able to reduce water pollution as we, as we manage this program. So just kind of a recap really quickly, water regulator, federal regulations have evolved and they require us to implement additional efforts to protect water quality and reduce the impact of development. In the past, there was kind of a, just, you know, go develop and do whatever you wanted and, and that was not necessarily evil, but it was not what they're, they're seeing. There's some major impacts to paving and, and building homes and things. And so at the beginning, it was basically, don't let the, the flows that are peak, the peak flows coming off your site exceed what was a pre-development condition. So, so that's what we've been operating on for, for quite a few years now, probably a couple of decades. And, and now the, the shift has gone to what is this onsite retention of the 80th percentile storm. So instead of just saying, hey, don't let the, the peak runoff be more than X, they're saying, not only can you not have that peak exceed, but you also need to keep whatever water was going to stay on your site, on your site in perpetuity, excuse me, in perpetuity so that you're not changing the, the dynamics of the ecosystem and the, the hydrology and the hydraulics around the area. So with that, the EPA has granted the Utah Department of Environmental Quality primacy, which means that they have the right to manage this program for the state of Utah. And we're beholden to those regulations through what is called an MS4 permit. We have one issued for Leyton City that allows us to discharge our stormwater into waters of the state, which include, you know, Case Creek and Holmes Creek and all of the waters that we have that eventually end up in the Great Salt Lake. So with that, one of the big changes that has come about recently is low-impact development. Instead of allowing us to, you know, just discharge into the street, into the streams, they're, they're telling us we have to minimize wherever technically feasible to, you know, infiltrate evapotranspire and harvest stormwater on the site. Any new development or redevelopment that occurs that disturbs greater than an acre has to manage that onsite water up to that 80th percentile storm, which is equivalent to about 0.45 inches of rain when it, when it falls during that 24-hour event. So developers are now required to provide us with what's called a stormwater quality report where they analyze the BMPs that are going to be most effective for LID. And then they have to document those as they submit their, their plans to us and we have to verify that they're not going to create negative impacts based on their development. So the Utah Department of Environmental Equality created a guide for everybody in the state to use in order to help assist in this implementation. Part of that was Leyton City and the rules of this new permit was required to allow at least five LID BMPs to be acceptable to the city, or by default, you are accepting all of the LID BMPs that were included in that document. So with the passage of our last update to our standards, we now have, I believe, eight of those in, in place that developers can use. So in this document, I'm going to show you a few pages of the fact sheets. They hired Michael Baker and another environmental engineering firm to put together this document. It's 155 pages, so I'm not going to bore you with it, but if you want to copy, I'm happy to share it. But it goes through basically the effectiveness of each one of these BMPs, the, the functions, when you, when you use them, when you don't, calculation of how to determine to size them correctly, installation guidelines and the maintenance requirements. So we have this chart in our guidelines and standards now. We have three items here where we will allow them to be publicly owned city facilities and the remainder will need to be privately owned facilities if, if they're chosen as their LID criteria for the development. So as you can see, rain gardens, bio-retention cells, bioswells, vegetative strips, they're all kind of in those green roofs. Those are all kind of related to, to green vegetation things, infiltration basins, underground infiltration galleries. They're more similar to our detention retention ponds. And then the harvest and reuse is also allowed and under state code in another section. And so we really couldn't deny that, but it, it seems to be one if people want to do, they can do fairly easily. So a few pictures here. Let's see. Got bio-retention cells. That's what this grassy area is right here in this parking area. You see the water would flow through these, these cuts and the, and then kind of pool in this area. You can see it's very high effectiveness for all these different nutrients and bacteria and oils and grease and things like that. Bioswale is kind of similar to that, a little bit less with the nutrients and the metals, but it's still effective for parking lots and parking areas. Vegetative strips are very similar to what you've seen throughout and around the city now. It's kind of swales that are out and about that help to take care of that water. And then green roofs are allowed. We don't have any here in the city and I don't anticipate unless we have some pretty major structures built that these will be popular, but, but they can be very effective for, for kind of roof runoff on big, big structures. Again, infiltration basins are similar to our detention basins we have now, except that they actually allow water to, to infiltrate into the ground instead of just being captured and then dispersed at a slower rate. These infiltration galleries that are underground are allowed. They're, they're buried, usually covered in gravel and fabrics and they are put to use under parking lots and other areas and, and maybe tighter sites that don't have a lot of open space to create those.
Dave?
Yeah.
Is that what they're putting at the Temple sign?
Yes, they do have a, an underground infiltration gallery. It's, it's quite a bit bigger than the one pictured here, but they do have a.
Big one on the west side of the side.
Yeah, the big one on the west side. It's a big corrugated metal.
So that's not just to store it and then put it out in the storm sewer that will actually infiltrate into the ground?
It's a hybrid system. So depending on, yeah, a little bit of both, but, but it will collect all of the water and meet these requirements. And then harvest and reuse, there are certain requirements from the, from the state. You can't store above so many gallons on your property if you're residential and if you're commercial, it's a little bit bigger. But that came about from a few years ago with some legislation that happened. So those are allowable. If people want to put rain barrels under their downspouts, they can. And then we can help them kind of understand the, the consequences of that if you don't change the water and you start growing algae and things like that. So there is some maintenance there, but, but they're private and people can choose to use those or not. So that's really all I had for LIDs. Is there any questions I can answer before I jump into the small cell infrastructure? Again, if you have questions and you want to, you kind of meet offline or chat, I'm happy to have some of my staff or myself meet with you and kind of explain more what the state requirements are and what we're doing to meet those as we, as we implement this MS4 permit program. So other question, we came up about small cell infrastructure and I'm not sure how familiar you are with this, but a few, a few years ago, September 1st of 2018, Utah code was adopted or amended, I guess Gary could answer that for us. But basically it allows wireless providers to put wireless infrastructure in small cell facilities in the public right-of-way. So by code, they are allowed in our streets. There's nothing we can do to stop them other than kind of help manage them, I guess is the way I'm going to put that. So small cells are, are networked. They're, they're antennas that are used that are low-powered micro antennas. So they're not the big macro towers you see at some of the city parks or some of the, the big tall antennas that are on the mountain. They're, they're smaller. They really do kind of appear to be, you know, the size of a light pole if you're, if you're putting it on a monopole or even smaller. Some of them are the size of a pizza box that are, that are mounted onto some of these things. So a lot of them are not even noticeable, but what they do is they allow the, the network to supplement where there's higher need for, for more data and more speed, but they don't have the same range as a macro tower. So you'll see them in more high densely populated areas like around the mall or things like that. So to date, we've had a request for a potential of six locations here in Leyton City. We haven't actually received any formal request to put them in yet, but just inquiries about that. So, so we're not on the list to receive a whole ton of these things. But the, the basic premise of this adoption became if there was no, if there was no standards in place, then they could do whatever they wanted. And so we wanted to make sure that we establish some standards. We spent some time looking around to see what other cities had done and Salt Lake City kept coming to the top of the list as one of the most robust and, and thorough ordinances and standards that are available. So with that, we adopted, I believe, previous to this most current council, these small cell standards that, that Salt Lake City had with some modifications to meet our own codes. But then with this most recent update to the development guidelines and design standards, we created our own documents so that it's our own in-house document, but it, it contains the same information that was in the previous one. It's just customized to us. So with that, there's just a big list here and I'm going to share this with you. I'm not going to read them all obviously, but, but Kim can get this to you and you can read through them. But, but basically we're concerned about aesthetics and where they're putting these things and, and making sure that they're not going to be a nuisance for people, making sure they're not big and obtrusive. And, and then they have to be shrouded and other things to make it so that they kind of blend in and try and be less of a, of an eyesore than, than what some people feel they, they could be. There's also, you know, things about the lights so you can't have a big bright light on the side of the thing unless it's required under federal law. You know, the, the power and stuff need to be appropriate based on Rocky Mountain Power requirements and, and things like that. They have to be able to identify them as what they are so that if there was any concern about radiation, people would know that there's, you know, RF signals coming out of a box or something like that. But nothing really crazy or, or nothing, you know, big, you know, and obtrusive for those things. So we have four different types of installations that are permitted. With the city, they can go on existing utility poles and existing utility lines. They can go attach to our traffic signal poles or UDOT's traffic signal poles. They can go attach to streetlights or they can be freestanding on what are called monopoles. So our, our ordinance actually requires that they, they go in this order of preference. So as they're looking for sites, we want them on strands attached to a utility pole or attached to the utility pole first and second. Then we would allow them on, on either our, our wood light poles or our, our metal streetlights that we have. That's just kind of generic because we do have some Rocky Mountain Power lights that are wooden poles with a, with a cobra head on it. Then we would allow them on an installation of a monopole. And then lastly, we would allow them on our traffic signals. We would do everything we can to, to not have them attached to those traffic signal poles just because we don't want to have any kind of issues with our, our traffic signals or interference that goes on with those. So, so a couple of questions people have, what are they going to look like? What are they going to be? So small cell attachments to streetlights, the, the items on the right here, those are unacceptable. You can see how big and bulky that is and, and then how kind of squat and round this one is. So it just kind of looks out of place. Whereas this one on the left, you know, it looks kind of like a base that you would see on a standard streetlight. And then the antenna part is this thing right here that sits above that streetlight. So, so those would be what would be considered acceptable to us. We would make them meet our standard streetlighting, black powder coating that we have as well. And then I'm not going to read through all of these, but there's locations here that say you have to put them in. say you have to put them in certain places so they're not obtrusive. They need to be so many feet away from driveways and things like that, but this will be in the set of slides that you guys can look through. And then the question comes up, what about residential areas? So in residential areas on any street that's less than 62 feet wide, which includes all of our residential streets, they can't put those in unless there is insufficient wireless service. There's no other feasible options to do it. And then it needs to be in the park strip. And so we have tried to limit where they could try and go so that we don't have them kind of sticking all over the city if someone chose to do it, but we aren't seeing that. The sales companies are not telling us that's what they're interested in, but it is in there to kind of help protect it from being a nuisance. So and then that would be what a monopole looks like in a residential neighborhood. It would need to be on the property line and it would need to be a minimum of 15 feet from a tree or at least five feet from the property line. And then in commercial areas, we would want it to not obstruct, say, the storefront here with their access, and so they would need to place those in appropriate locations. And then for traffic signals, basically, everything's got to be in a ground mounted box away from the signal. They have to make sure that there's no electrical, physical, or radio interference with it. And then they would also have to provide an analysis that says that it's not going to interfere and that it won't interfere with anything into the future. So anyway, I'm happy to answer any other questions or meet offline and talk in more detail on those things, but I wanted to leave some time for Chad to get his items taken care of.
I have one quick question for you. So on the illustration that you gave us there and how it shows that it will be at the base, go back one more.
This one here or this one here?
One more.
See, this one?
Nope. On our streetlight poles, right there.
On here, yeah.
So my concern is, is that going to cover up our Leighton City design element that we have on our poles now?
It should not because everyone that we've talked to has said they're willing to work with us and make sure that it meets all of those design aesthetics that we have. Again, I've only had six requests and none of them have been to use an existing pole that we have. So but that is one of the requirements. It has to meet our same design aesthetic that we have with our light poles now. And if they have to replace it in order to do this, we'll require them to meet that same look.
Okay. So if they do need to be at the base and that does cover it, then somehow we'll incorporate our existing look so that we have that continuity then throughout the city, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the intent is that if it does need to be on a streetlight, that it looks almost identical to a streetlight. And the only difference is that you would maybe notice is that the top would have an extension on it.
Okay, very good.
How are you going to put an extension when there's a light though?
Well, so that's the, yeah, that's the thing is our SLO2s and our SLO4s, they don't allow for those types of installs, so they really could only put them on an SLO1 that's on like Leighton Parkway or something like that.
Steve, I want to tell you thank you because it was my questions that brought this up, and I appreciate you explaining this. It's been helpful.
Yeah, and if you have more, I'm happy to meet or talk to you about anything that you have there. So Councilman Morris, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a question. I know the Planning Commission, oh, I don't know, 18 months ago, we talked about 5G and we had to, we agreed to some sort of a contract. I don't remember what that was. Is this, is this part of that? Is this to establish a 5G network when it happens and autonomous vehicle, all that kind of stuff that we think about way in the future? That's infrastructure being put in?
That's essentially what this infrastructure is, and that's what these networks are being built for is for all of that increased demand. If you've noticed, I unfortunately did a calculation of how many devices I have on my home network, and I'm up to 33 now. And I'm not really a huge user, but we have just a ton of devices, and that's what's happening is this devices, the devices are proliferating all over the country. And so they're finding the macro towers work really well for big areas, but there are certain areas where they can't get that signal and the data and bandwidth that they need. So they're moving to these 5Gs in those specific places, but they will not, from what we're being told, they will not replace all of those macro towers, those big tall towers with these small cells because they're just not, they're not as effective as far as the cost of the network, but they do supplement those macro towers and allow for this autonomous vehicles and all the other data needs that are out there. You'll see a lot of these around stadiums and other big public gathering places. I would imagine that the few that we've seen are up there near the mall and also the conference center. So they're trying to make sure that those places have adequate cell coverage in those areas for the demands they see.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to item number five. And Brad Wilkinson will be presenting. Actually, I'll just go ahead and let everybody know now, you'll have five, six, seven, and eight, so.
Thank you.
You have, what, 20 minutes? 25 minutes max?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to go through these fairly briefly, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can. The first one that we want to talk about is an amendment. I'm going to, we've got our city council stuff here, or our regular meeting stuff here as well, excuse me. Let me turn that slideshow on. So this is an amendment that's proposed by an individual citizen. It's an amendment to our setback tables for corner side yard setbacks for accessory structures in the RS zone. This is an illustration of what are existing on the right-hand side. That's the existing setback requirements for accessory structure in the RS zone. On the left-hand side is the proposed setback standards. It's a 20-foot versus a 30-foot setback. You'll recall just recently, within the last couple of months, we had a request by another individual who came and asked us to modify the corner lot setbacks in that RS zone for primary structures. That's what was approved by the council, was a 20-foot setback. The current applicant is a separate individual that has a desire to build an accessory structure on their RS lot, and they've requested that those setbacks be modified to match what was approved by the council for primary structures, which would be 20 feet. And so you can see that shown on the drawing. Again, we have, we've reviewed this, the Planning Commission reviewed the request, and they've recommended approval of that. Be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Yeah, the only problem I'm running in with some of this is the size of the driveway. We're taking it down from 30 feet to 20-foot potential for a driveway. And in an accessory structure, real frequently, it's for RVs and trucks and boats, and if they're in the driveway, they don't fit, and they hang out into the street, and we see that all the time. You know, you go out walking and you have to go in the street to walk around a truck that's overhanging that. So I just have a little bit of concern. I don't totally object to it. I just think that there's going to be an enforcement issue that needs to really kind of be watched with these places. And then my other question is, is other than that particular issue, do you see anything else that could be a potential detriment to doing this?
You know, staff's somewhat neutral on this question. I think we don't see any detriments. We don't have any opposition to this particular amendment. We do think that 20 feet is the bare minimum that we'd want to have for a setback, so we would definitely not be more comfortable going any less than that. 20 feet, though, gives you enough for, you know, more than enough for a standard vehicle. Certainly, things like RVs, you know, boats, things like that, we would have to monitor from a code enforcement standpoint, but those would not be allowed to project into the right of way. So, you know, if someone was going to build something like this out of 20-foot setback, they'd have to still, you know, keep those vehicles from crossing the right of way if they had other things parked there on their lot. So we don't see necessarily any additional detriments. They'd still be able to meet all of our vision clearance triangle requirements for the driveways. We'd still have all the spacing standards for driveways that would apply, just like they do today. So we don't have any objections to it. Don't see any other, you know, any detriment to it, with the understanding that you're absolutely right. That's an issue that we have to watch as far as the other vehicles parking there.
Why? Why would you move it from 30 to 20? I mean, just cheaper? I mean, what's the advantage of?
Yeah, why did the applicant want to do that?
What's that?
Why did the applicant want to go from-
Just to get some additional room for that accessory structure in that rear yard, based on some of the constraints that they have.
What?
They had some constraints in the rear yard and they wanted to scoot it up a little bit further so they could make it work. Yep.
So I have a question, if anybody knows. How long is a double cab truck with a long bed?
Over 22 feet long, because I've checked into that, because we have a parking ordinance coming up in the future, and that they are 22 feet long.
They discussed that in that review.
Okay. Because I'm looking at that going, you know, I agree in making this all standard, but then I'm looking at the driveways, and the driveways are 25 feet. So why, we could actually be consistent, and if that's going to be having a driveway in it, why not it be the same as the family residential side at 25 versus 20?
25 is the front yard setback, but you could certainly have a corner loaded house that could be built with a 20-foot setback. There's nothing that requires that driveway to come from that 25-foot direction right now for the primary structure. So our concern would be less than 20. Certainly, you know, yeah, there's going to be some vehicles that exceed that, but, you know, your average vehicle is going to be less than 20 feet.
Okay. Any other questions?
My concern is the same as Dawn's. I don't, I personally not too much in favor of going to a 20-foot, because we have one person that's requesting it, but by changing the ordinance, we open the whole city up to it. So I'm a little hesitant to go 20-foot. I'd be much more agreeable to a 25 maybe because of the length of some of those big trucks and stuff, but I just don't see the need for it.
I guess my concern is kind of similar in that I don't want to continue to open up additional amendments just from one person. One person previous changed the side or the side setback or the previous setback and then this one. And so two applicants changed what the city had decided was the best route. And obviously, you guys aren't recommending that we not approve it, in fact, opposite. So obviously, you guys don't have a problem with it. It just, I guess it just kind of goes back to what discussions we've had as a council just to make sure that I want to respect the ability of citizens to make amendments, but when they make an amendment to the entire ordinance, then they're not making it for themselves, they're making it for everybody, and that's kind of my concern too.
Maybe some context for that and maybe some reason why we don't object to this is that all the other zones, this is the standard. So 20 feet would be the standard in all the other single-family residential zones. So, you know, throughout the city, many, many properties already allow this setback and seem to function just fine. So I think we have a track record of this not being a big, you know, enforcement issue or things like that because there are, you know, hundreds of lots that already have this standard that apply.
All right, is there, are there other areas that you could see? Maybe I'm just thinking like a lawyer, because, sorry, Gary, when you win a case and you get a precedent and then you go to the next, someone else is seeing that, then they will push whatever their area and they want to get that precedent. So I'm just curious if we continue to just allow these small amendments if it continues to, you know, we change it by 1,000 cuts, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, that's always a consideration. We consider all of these individually. There's no precedent set certainly by a code amendment for one standard, meaning that we have to change a code for another standard. That's never the case. These are all legislative decisions, they're policy decisions. At some point, a policy was made that said that 30-foot is the right setback, you know. However, R18, R110, all the other zones, the policy was made that 20-foot was the right setback. So I think that, you know, these are the kind of discussions we need to have with each of these requests. In this case, again, it seems to function pretty well in all those other single-family zones. We don't have a lot of issues with them. There's always occasional code enforcement issues with any standard. So I think, you know, based on the history of that, we don't have any objection to this, but certainly this is a policy issue for you to decide, and, you know, it wasn't something that we as staff were proposing, but we don't have any objections to it either.
So in those other zonings, the structure setback's smaller too, right?
It depends. Might be helpful for me to bring up that code, and I think we might even have a copy. Yeah, I think we've included that in your packet. Let me, I can point you to a page or bring that up, but. So for R18 is an example, your minimum front yard is identical. It's a 25-foot front yard with some additional increases for being in an arterial street. Minimum corner lots, 20 feet, 25-foot for an arterial. None of that's proposed to change with this amendment. It'd still be 25 feet for an arterial. So in that particular zone, R18, it's exactly the same. R16, same. In fact, now that I'm looking at it, I don't see that there's any of our single-family zones that are anything different from what this proposal is. They're all 20.
What about R110 and RS?
R110 is the, again, 25 feet and 20 feet for the corner side. So RS is the only zone right now that has this additional 10-foot setback.
But that's the one we're trying to change here tonight.
That's right. Yep. So again, what we're saying is that we have all these other zones that currently function this way. We haven't seen any major issues with that. If there's no other questions, I'd be happy to move on to the next item. Okay, we can definitely talk about it more in the next hearing. Next item is rezone request by the Lamonos. They're here tonight. This is a request from RM1 PRUD to MU. The property is shown in red there, that red outline. It's within our town center zone, our town center area around the Smith's grocery store there. You can see that grocery store there where my arrow is. The request is to change that zoning from RM1 PRUD to MU. That's consistent with the general plan for town center, that mixed-use designation. The property is currently entitled for multifamily residential. They currently have approvals for that, that were already approved, you know, prior to this, years before this. They've come, the applicants come back and requested a change to that to allow for some mixed-use development with a slightly different design. This is the proposed design. I'll show you some renderings of that. One of the things that's included in this design is some live-work space. You can see that space outlined there in red that would include some conference room space, offices, shared space that could be used for a homeowner that wanted to have a small business that could operate from that location. So they did include that element as part of their development. This is the previous approval. Again, you can see multifamily was the previous design. We do feel like we're getting a design that's more in keeping with the mixed-use desire for that area. This is the proposed design. You can see the units there. They have garages on some of those units with living space above on these end units and then just some multifamily residential there in between. So these are, again, conceptual drawings. They are requesting the zone change at this point, and then those development review drawings will come back for review at a later date. So with that, the Planning Commission did review this request, found it to be compatible and consistent with the general plan and did recommend approval, and we are agree with that recommendation. So be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Okay, I have actually a couple. In the, in your department's feelings, what is, what size acreage is good for mixed use?
So like what would be a minimum size? You know, I think there's not a minimum size that we would recommend. Really, it just comes down to the design, whether that parcel can accommodate the design. We don't set a minimum acreage on those mixed-use zones. You, of course, have to meet the minimum parking standards, provide some open space, provide those things that are required as part of just the development standards, but we don't have a minimum size.
Okay, because I was just reading earlier today in the Leighton Ford General Plan on page 12, that it talks about parcels maybe too small or too odd shapes to accommodate desirable multi-use. And is this, and what's the size of this little red building?
The little red building?
How many square feet?
I would have to look that up. I don't know the, might say on that plan, I can't quite see it, but-
I don't think that's a building, that's just a lower level, right?
I remembered the-
This is a building proposed right here, yeah.
A separate building?
Uh-huh, yep. So that is a building proposed, and the applicants here, and they could probably give you an idea with that.
And is it a single-story building?
No, this has got, I can show you on the elevations again. This is the building right here. So it's got two stories.
Okay, and so the first floor is greater than 12 feet, correct? Because everything I'm reading, what I'm reading in here is if it's multi-use, there's a difference between the first and second. The first floor requirement in a multi-story, if it's going to have a non-residential use on the ground floor, must be a minimum of 12 feet to the second floor. Does that building meet that standard?
So we haven't got into the design, but they'll have to meet those designs when they come forward with their. We haven't reviewed, we haven't reviewed the official building plans because it's just the zone change portion. just the zone change portion of this, but they'll have to meet those standards.
Okay. I just have to tell you, I have a real hard time with this one, a very hard time with this one. It was zoned initially, RM1PRUD, which is low density, medium to low density, six to 12 units per acre, and a max of 40 units. And we're wanting to go to 53. That's, in my mind, that's a little bit more traffic than that little road can handle right now with everything else that's going on. And I don't, personally don't think one building with a little bit of space, which should reflect a potential commercial use on the ground level, that's our definition of mixed use out of our own general plan in live-work units, that this is, that this is doing this. I, 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 I don't know why we just can't take the PRUD standards and take the MR, the M1 that it currently has and redesign something and keep the, the zoning that's currently on it with a little bit of a different design.
Okay, thank you. You know, we, it's consistent with that general plan. I, I want to just talk a little bit about mixed use generally. A lot of communities that I've worked in where we've adopted mixed-use corridors, mixed-use zoning, there wasn't already a commercial presence established in those mixed-use areas. So as an example, in one community that I was in down the, in Salt Lake County, we had an area that had been rezoned mixed-use, and we were, we were just dying to be able to find a grocery use that could come there and, and support that mixed-use development that, that we were trying to develop in that area, right along a, a transit corridor. So what you see typically is that the development community comes in first and wants to build the residential, because that's, that's the, you know, the, the most, I, I guess, the easiest for them to develop, and the, it's very profitable for them. In these areas, we already have some of that commercial component established. And it's important to remember that mixed use doesn't mean that every single development has to have a commercial and a residential portion. The mixed use can be throughout that town center. In this case, we have some elements that are fantastic that already exist there. We've got, we've got a grocery store. We've got some other service providers there that, that provide services to that town center area. So it actually, it, it can be desirable to have just residential use developed in these mixed-use areas, particularly in areas that already have a commercial use established. So when we, when we review these, we're not necessarily saying every single development has to have a commercial component in order for it to be consistent with that mixed-use designation. In fact, in some cases, where you have an existing commercial center that, that could use that additional residential support, we want to have that density higher. We want to have more units that could then support the commercial element so that that commercial component can stay viable. So again, our, our recommendation is that this is entirely consistent with the general plan, and, and we did recommend approval of this. And I know that the applicant is here and can answer questions about the individual development components if you'd like. Again, this is not the, the development review stage of this, we're just reviewing the zone. But that's, that's our position on that, and I appreciate, that's what we're here for, is to talk about this. But that's, that's our position on this development.
I'm going to kind of agree with you, Dawn. I'm not seeing the huge benefit to a rezone other than that one building. And as far as the elevations and everything, I think they could come back under the zoning that they are and build almost the same layout as proposed here. So I'm having a little hard time as well with a rezone for just two or three unit mixed use.
The other thing I don't see, and maybe it's because this is a concept plan, but I don't see amenities and stuff for the 53 units, where in an RM1PRUD, we're going to have amenities. And I, I think that's a crucial issue, too. 53 apartments with nothing to do but walk across the street to Smith's is, is not, the nearest park is probably City Park. I, I just, I, I just think the zoning ought to be left the way it is.
And we can, we can have the applicant address during the public hearing, the amenities that they plan, but there's definitely quite a bit of open space planned here. And they have some other amenity spaces that they can explain to you.
And Chad, do we talk about the traffic, the increased traffic here? Are we, within the, I mean, because we've got the temple site is right there and, and other stuff happening?
Based on the increase in units, we don't, there's not a, there's not going to be a big increase in traffic. It's, it's not, we're, we're going from the approved 40 to additional, potentially additional 13. The, that's counting some, some live-work space in that bottom, bottom unit there. So the, the increase in traffic's not going to be substantial from this development. The, the numbers that, the numbers that they already have, there's quite a bit of traffic already built into those numbers. So that's not, it's already been anticipated and planned for.
Okay, we got two more items still. Do you want to, anybody else?
Any other questions? We'll move on to the next one. Next one's similar, but different. This is another rezone request to mixed use. This one is, again, on the, in the town center area, mixed-use corridor center area that's identified, this time up on Gordon and Fairfield. This one's kind of on the, on the edge of that town center area. The applicant has proposed, again, another mixed-use zoning. And this is, this is some of the language from the general plan. Mixed-use corridors provide a land use buffer, transition between intensive arterial streets and less intensive single-family residential. So again, single-family to the south, this is right along that busy street. It provides that, that buffer. This is the area that they're planning to rezone, or proposing to rezone. You can see the adjacent uses. We've got the school across the, the street there on Gordon, some, the existing commercial core area to the east, and the, the Fairfield Square development there, I'm just right under my mouse there. And then the, the Buddhist temple located between that and the, the new development there. Again, we've worked closely with the applicant. We've, we've been able to make sure that we have appropriate buffers between the, the single-family zone to the south and the proposed mixed use. The idea, again, behind this mixed-use development is not necessarily that it has to have a commercial component, but that it meets those mixed-use design criteria. This is on kind of the outskirts. So a residential project is appropriate based on that mixed-use zoning for mixed-use component and general plan designation. This is, again, potential conceptual plan, other than we do have an agreement from the applicant that they would, you know, make sure to have that 10-foot landscape buffer as part of their development that's required. There's a little bit of discretion given on that buffer, and they've agreed to kind of the larger of the buffers that's allowed in that code when we buffer those single-family. This is, again, just a shot of that. They'll still have to meet all the parking requirements for the zone. The design of the building is shown here. We've worked, we've worked really hard to get a, a very mixed-use design for this particular site, with the building located close to the street, good pedestrian connections, parking tucked behind to the rear and side. Just some potential floor plans there. So with that, this was also reviewed by the planning commission, and the recommendation of approval has been forwarded to the city council, and we be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Any questions?
I don't have a question exactly with this, just curiosity. A few years back, we approved like a mausoleum at the Buddhist temple. Was that ever built? I don't think it was, was it?
I don't know. That's, it's a good question. Maybe some of the other folks here know.
I don't think it was, was it?
Uh-uh. Not yet.
Any other questions, or I can move briefly onto the next one?
Yeah. How far is that from the, the school?
How far is it from the school?
I can see it, but I can't.
Just right across the street. Yep. The school's just right directly to the north. You can see the crosswalk right there to the school.
Okay, that's the crosswalk. Where do they exit, come in, whatever?
There's a vehicle, an entrance right here on, on Valeria.
That's the parking.
But the, the pedestrian, all these would have entrances out to the, to the sidewalk.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian, yeah, pedestrian connections out the sidewalk, yep.
But they have to turn down, what is it, Valerie, or Valerie, whatever you call it?
Valeria is where I say it. Could be something different, Ballaria? I don't know.
So Chad, on the.
Call it your way. I'll call it my way.
That's right. That's right.
On the parking on this, is all the parking contained for the, the units on this property?
Well, so they have, again, they haven't proposed yet the specific units. This, this particular property, they, they would have to get some additional, or this particular concept, they'd have to get some shared parking from an adjacent property, which is allowed in our code. But that could, you know, change depending on, if they can't get that shared parking, they'd have to reduce the number of units.
Okay. We good?
One more.
We got one more item here.
Okay, I'll go quick. This one, this one's an interesting request, because it's, it's a kind of a multi-step process that we think is very in keeping with the general plan and what the desire is for this area. This is a, the zone changed from A agricultural to CH. This is the existing Wasatch trailer use there on, on South Main. The general plan calls for this area to be business park mixed use in the future. As a part of that, one of the big challenges whenever you have mixed-use development is trying to assemble parcels. Parcel assemblage can be a real challenge. In fact, in some cases, we almost would rather not have a mixed-use development come in if it doesn't have the right size, just to your point before, Dawn, that sometimes if you've got a long skinny parcel, it doesn't lend itself to mixed-use development as much as if you can get a consolidated parcel with all the correct elements in place. So in this case, the general plan does call for that business park mixed-use zoning. The request is to go to CH. We, we've reviewed this with the applicant. We think that this is a great way for us to get some parcel consolidation in anticipation of a future zone change to that business park mixed-use zoning. The request, again, is to go from agriculture, there's the, the parcel that you can see there in green, to CH. We have entered, or we have proposed a development agreement with the applicant that would provide for that parcel assemblage. It would put some limits on the types of development that could occur there. When you start to put structures on, it makes it more difficult for redevelopment in the future. So this would be strictly for the storage of these trailers as an expansion of their use there in order for them to continue to use that and have some, some additional storage, but also to prevent anything that would make it more difficult for redevelopment in the future by not allowing any kind of permanent structures there. There's some steps or some deadlines in that development agreement. We have requirements for them to consolidate those parcels that I showed, those three. They also lease these parcels that are not in that white outline, and we have some requirements for them to consolidate those should they become available for, for purchase in the, in the future. So the first, first one, again, there, they'd have to consolidate the parcels by the end of this year. If they could get those additional parcels to the north, we would require them to consolidate into one big parcel that would facilitate that mixed-use business park development in the future. They'd have to have a site plan reviewed and completed by that deadline. One of the other things that we're working on is there is a, right now, a, a existing non-compliance storage area that, it's kind of just off the map here, just up off of Fort Lane and between Fort Lane and Maine, where they've got some storage of, of trailers going on that was not permitted, but that would be, that use would be stopped. They, they would not have any more use there, include the trailer sales at that other property by the deadline shown there on the screen, by 2022. We'd have some, some provisions to make sure the deliveries of the trailers now can occur on-site with this extra area so we don't have those occurring off in the, in the street. Some landscape provisions. And then that last one is just that it's saying that those completion dates are the required completion dates per the agreement. So with that, we are recommending approval. We think this is a, a great opportunity for us to consolidate some parcels in, in preparation for future redevelopment of these sites.
So Chad, could you just outline all the properties that you're saying they're going to consolidate?
A, B, and C. So there's a little parcel there, parcel here, and a parcel here. Those would be the ones that would be consolidated right now. About two and a half acres worth.
Then the rest north of that's already CH.
This is already CH, and that parcel's already, the only piece they're asking for the rezone is that green piece right there. Yep.
And this applicant has.
They've got a lease.
Currently, they're, this, all, all of their trailers are on F, E, and D, right?
Yep, that's right.
Which includes a little corner up at the top.
Yeah, plus, plus the illegal one, or.
Well, the, the, the.
Non-conform.
Non-conforming ones up here, non-compliant ones up here.
Sorry.
Off the map. I can probably get there if I come out here. That, that non-compliant lot sits about right there.
Yeah.
Just off the map.
Okay.
Any other questions? And I can answer additional questions during the hearing as well. So.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the details there. Okay, it's three minutes to our regularly scheduled meeting. I'm going to go ahead and call for this meeting to adjourn so that you guys can have a, a quick break and that we can start on time at 7:00 PM.